And to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lame down. Following, thank you for this evening, and thank you for the good crowd we have here tonight. We ask that you be with each one of us and help us make the right decisions. And we just thank you for the beautiful weather that you're giving us and the chill in the air. It makes us realize it's close to the holidays, is always in the morning.
I think you're right. I think it's supposed to be on the, actually on the other side there. Some courts have been utilizing this space now sometime while the innovation proceeds out there. I'd like to welcome our guest in distress, and glad you're here tonight. We have one presentation here I would like to make, and ask Mr. Pete Miller to come forward if you would please. Yo, back in the springtime, we had these tornadoes that came through. Actually destroyed some property over on, well, on Highway 140. Before you get to the interstate there between Cherron and the interstate out there. And the road was actually closed for some time because there were tons of trees there. I believe three vehicles were accident buried that had people in them with trees. And a lot, quite a bit of damage and everything. And our folks spent a long time out there trying to clean up the debris. And fortunately, we were able to get the debris up, and we didn't have to take it very far. Just, you know, a hundred yards or two hundred yards or so. Just the property that Mr. Miller was gracious enough to allow us to store this debris on. And it's being removed, or I don't know if it's all been removed yet. All of it's been removed by now, but there was a tremendous amount of debris that was stored on his property. And he allowed us to do so. And we'd certainly like to thank him for allowing us to do that. Saved us a lot of time and money, and we can go to other areas and clean up other areas as well. But this, this actually says, whereas on June 13th, 2013, a line of thunderstorms, producing heavy winds, significant amount of lightning, and two confirmed tornadoes moved through Cherokee County, resulting in dozens of trees being snapped and uprooted. And whereas, much of the damage to trees in Canton occurred on Hickory Flat Highway near I-575. And whereas, another line of thunderstorms went through Canton on June 17th, 2013, resulting in even more damage to already weakened trees. And whereas, the city of Canton used a site on Hickory Flat Highway to store storm debris on property owned by Mr. Peter Miller. And whereas, from June 12th, 13th to September the 29th, 2013, approximately 672 loads of brush was hauled onto Pete Miller's property on Hickory Flat Highway, and approximately 2,352 tons of mulch was hauled out. Therefore, the city of Canton and mayor and council wish to express appreciation to Pete Miller for the use of his property on Hickory Flat Highway as a site for the city of Canton to store storm debris. Thank you. Before we move to approve the agenda, I would like to note that I am deleting item 10G off of the agenda discussion with Mr. Wood. And I both agreed that we don't have, well, there's still some things to iron out on the contract. We don't have actually the contract as we would like to have it. And you got some revisions late yesterday, so we will, we will put this back on for our next meeting. But we wanted to go ahead and take it off at this, at this time. Any other, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Would that change? Or will that change coming off before the motion? That motion approved, or any, a second, any other discussion? If not, those who favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Members voting for the motion. Okay, you have in your agenda package there the minutes from October the 17th, 2013. You have both the public hearing minutes that we had, as well as the council meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Have a motion, a second, approved. Any other discussion? If not, those who favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. You also have in your agenda package the September 2013 financial statements. Are there any questions about those? We have our CFO here and city manager, if there are any questions regarding the financial statements for September. Now, we will have our 10-minute public input period, which, you know, sometimes lasts so long within that. But we have Mike George from Townville.
Yes, ma'am.
Come on up, if you'd like to say something.
If you were asking, I'll tell you this, about a month ago, y'all gave me a permit at Townville, a building up there. And they're going to find there, but I've got another contract possibly up there. And I was seeing if I can honor this contract with another building permit. Mayor said you didn't get it on the basis of, on a home basis.
I believe we did, did say that, so, but, but I think it's, but that's not, you don't actually have a contract at this point, right?
I don't. I got a tender ran out on this, but I'm going to get a permit or not.
Okay. What we will do is, we will discuss this among the council, and we will get back with you. City manager will contact you and let you know what we decide on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I hate to say this, but I'm not sure I can read it right here. Neil?
Yep.
What's your last name?
Paul McKinnon.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure it looks like now. Come on up.
I'm here actually to talk about the vote at the moment, August the 15th, about the, what should we call it? The building moratorium on the city streets that are not signed off. And I think there's a couple of people in this room that would agree, and probably the builders that are sitting in this room, that they don't feel that they were represented well, the way the motion was brought forward. It was pretty much a snap of the finger decision. There was no notice of intent on this meeting. We're asking it to be overturned until some kind of further remedies could be, you know, on the, on the street pavement, signed off streets. No, the answer is not turning off the lights. We all know that the streets have to be top coated. We know that there's issues with lots that would, with some signed off issues other than just paving. But with the answer of just turning the lights off to these guys that want to build in this town, and they want to bring income and tax dollars to this town, it's definitely so far from the answer. And I've got about 30-something petitions just in the section of River Green that I live in, that I've got signed and agree to the same thing. They want to see these guys coming here. They want to see stakes raised in the area. They want to see tax dollars come into the community, and have their home values to go back up. You know, and letting these guys not build in this town is not the way you get tax dollars to go back up, or get tax revenue or home values to go back up.
If you wish, you could leave those with our clerk there, and she'll give copies of that to our council members. And we will be consulting with our city attorney regarding any questions that you've had that you raised.
I've got copies of the petition itself. I can give you a bunch of copies if you want to have.
Is that what you're leaving with her?
Yes. And it's the whole issue, I'm sorry, the whole issue is not that anybody disagrees with the problem. We're all in disagreement of what the solution right now is, and that is, there's no permits allowed. I mean, you have a builder that just came up here for a permit because he's got a contract opportunity. And meanwhile, he's low as a sail because that potential buyer just walked down the street in another town. Possibly. He'll be able to go buy it out because they came by once again.
Right, right.
So how is that fair for him? How is it even legal?
What do you suggest? What do you think the solution is?
I talked to, one of the, one of the, my friend Weatherby was running. And, you know, one of the things was maybe that they need to take a look at how many lots are attached to these unpaid or unsigned off areas, and that's your pool of money. So what do you do? Do you do a CO cost? Maybe where to get a CO, you pay an additional amount of money on these lots that are paying to these? Now, we're not talking about pods where there's roads. If you're buying into a section of a neighborhood where you're buying a pod A or pod B, then that buyer knows that they're accepting those roads and they have to top them. When you're a builder who owns one or two, three, four, five, even 10 lots, and they're half a mile in the neighborhood, then how do you, how is it even feasible or economically smart to even come in there and build an house?
We will, we will, we will take a look at what you got there and get back with you.
Can we get this vote put on the agenda for next, next council meeting?
We'll, we'll make that, that be up to the council, say what should do, so we can get that settled.
So we asked, we asked for that to be on the agenda to vote?
I think you just did.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got somebody working on that now.
Can I ask one more thing? I'm sorry.
Sure.
When it was brought up to vote on, on the 15th, was it, was there any kind of agenda put forward with the meeting before? Or was it just brought up right then and voted on?
I can't remember, do you?
Because according to the notes I have from the meeting before, and one before that, and that current meeting, there was no discussion of any kind of moratorium.
It's actually, if I remember correctly, it was on the work session. It was also, it was on the voting session, because at that point in time, we had the procedure where it had to be on the, on the work session first, and then on a voting session. So it was on two sessions.
The moratorium part was only work session?
Yes, and the, it was not only there, but it also came up later because we had a conflict that, I believe one of the builders is here. We had a conflict about an existing street that has already been accepted by the city. And at that point in time, when we had the conflict, we decided that we would have to look at this as a one-on-one basis. We even have an item on tonight's agenda that's going to be looking at all of the subdivisions. You know, should the council so prove so. It's been an ongoing process since August.
But with that said, the gentleman's got a point here, is that we need to shut, shut this down.
I mean, he's sitting, he's got his own, he's got his livelihoods.
We need to, Stan Tech would want to come in here and do their, do their things, but at the same time.
If I may, Mr. Merrill, answer that point too. We've also had discussions, Mr. Dyer, Mr. Wood, and myself have had discussions, how we can address these single, isolated cases. And I think we're close to having a solution. Would that be correct, Mr. Dyer? So I think, I think this, to answer you correctly, I think this problem is going to disappear in most cases. It'll be taken care of in a fair and equitable way, that you don't get the situation where, and I understand where you're coming from. You've got one lot on a street that's a half a mile long, and nobody's going to build on that lot if they have to finish a half a mile of streets. And we're trying to address that particular situation. On the other hand, we have 15 to 16 miles of unfinished streets in the city, and we don't want to have 20 to 21 to unfinished miles of streets four or five years down the road. So I would ask that you give it a little bit of time, or a little bit of patience until we work out what we have.
Can I ask a question? So when these, when these lots are, so we buy permits off a final-platted community, right? Is that correct, in the city of Canton?
I would assume so, yes.
It's final-platted. So these guys own lots in final-platted neighborhoods. And legally, they don't own the right-of-way or the road. So how does, how do you legally keep them from building? I mean, I understand, I understand the predicament. I'm not, nobody's looking to pass a buck at first. But how can you legally help these guys? They can't build houses.
Well, I don't think anyone here is an attorney other than their city attorney. And I don't, I don't know whether you can legally or not. I think that may be something we find out if it, if it were to go on. But, you know, we really need to know that.
If, if Mr. Dyer, Mr. Cummings, and if y'all come up with, with you think, if something is going to work, could you share? Are you in a position to share that with us?
I'd like to ask Mr. Dyer if he thinks you're in a position to share.
It's just an idea.
All right, then I'll share it. The idea that we're looking at, there's a variation. It depends on whether it's a complete pod or an individual lot. If it's a complete pod, we're probably going to keep the current policy in place, requiring a performance bond if that pod is owned by a single builder in that, in that pod. Because, for an example, is, there is a pod where there's approximately 60 lots, I don't know the exact number, owned by one single builder. In that case, he is a developer also, in that case. In the case where we have single lots, we are looking at a permit fee, an additional permit fee, based on frontage foot to a maximum amount per lot. We haven't established either the per-footage amount or the maximum amount. And that would be considered then a contribution towards the entire street's, the proportionate amount towards the entire street, or finishing the entire street.
There would be a dollar amount, if you have a 70-foot lot.
If you had a 70-foot lot, and let's just, I will only give you hypothetical. Let's assume that we use $30 a foot, and we said, all right, a 70-foot lot would be $2,100. And maybe our maximum was $2,000, then it would be a $2,000 permanent fee for that lot. That is the concept only. Those numbers are not the specific numbers. And that's what we have been discussing. So that'll give you, give you an idea. But this does not apply to a finished, accepted street. So if you own a lot on a street that's already been finished and accepted by the city, there is nothing restricting a building permit on that particular lot. In fact, that was the case of the exception that we, we had to make in the, in the, actually in the River Green community, where there was a duplex being built on a finished lot, or on a, on a lot that was on a finished, accepted street. That's where we are at this point. We have, we just have, so I think the problem is going to resolve itself. I just got to ask for the patience until it resolves.
Then who's responsible to get it, the street finished? Would that money be held in escrow for that street for the developer?
Or, Mr. Dyer and I talked about that that money would have to be kept on the books as a credit towards finishing that particular street. Now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of complexity that we get involved into when we go to finishing the street. That will be determined by the city. The city, Mr. Dyer, round and round on this. For example, we may have three lots, we're, just hypothetically, again, where we've collected $10,000, but it's going to cost us $100,000 to finish the street. That $10,000 would be a credit against the $100,000, meaning there would be a $90,000 cost to the city, or cost to someone, to finish that street.
There's some context.
Yeah, yeah.
I think some context would help here. I mean, who's supposed to finish the street is the developer. It's a development regulation. Now, with the reason, in my opinion, that we can withhold the permit is because the development regulations haven't been complied with. Now, you get into all the different issues of, okay, you've already got some houses built, and it's a mess. It's a mess. But the answer to the question is, the developer is supposed to finish the street.
But there was a bond in place, it was never changed.
Then there's bonds, then there's developers that are disappearing, they're going bankrupt. It's a mess.
But, but the city may end up having to pay the streets. We don't know.
But, but the answer to the question is, the developer is supposed to.
Do we do it with no tax dollars, or do we do it with, how it's being sold, flows, tax dollars?
That's what, that's what you're trying to figure out, is how, where's the money income from?
Where's the money? That's what we're actually working on, is trying to find the fairest and most equitable way to arrive at that answer.
But you probably can't get enough money to pay the street with a lot fee. Without, there's not enough lots.
It's just like a road that don't involve lots. I mean, they're.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going to make the point that we've got a recommendation on the agenda to engage Stan Tech to assess this problem and give us the benefit of their professional expertise based on how this problem has been resolved and addressed in other areas. And as soon as we can get that report recommendation back from them, rather than us trying to homebrew a remedy, for what I think that's going to be better for everybody, is it, is this later than we all, y'all and us wish it were, probably? But we're moving on to it as fast as we can right now.
But, but in the meantime, I appreciate the problems that these builders have.
We, I think everybody appreciates the problems we have, but let's don't keep adding to the problem.
Okay, I don't want to add to the problem, but I don't want to shut them down either.
I mean, he's just been allowed to get a permit if he's got a deal he can close tomorrow, why can't he get a permit? That's what, that's the argument, is he owns the road, I mean, he owns the lot, not the right-of-way, not the street.
Well, we, we are not going to resolve this tonight, I can tell you. So we, we need to move on to the other items on the agenda. And as far as I'm concerned, we should have something on the agenda for the next meeting.
Is that the other vote next?
Well, I think it'll be up to the council whether they want to vote on it or not. But we can have it on for discussion. If they choose to vote, they can. Could I make a motion that we? It's already on the agenda here, you can't. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, the next person, may I, Coglin? Is that, is that right?
Goglin.
No, oh, I'm sorry, it's a G.
I'm a, I'm a builder in River Green, and I've been building in River Green since 2004. And I actually own three lots, right next to sort of Councilman Cummins' house. And I've owned these lots since 2005. And I paid a premium for these lots. These lots are on an unpaid street, or a street that's missing the second coat of pavement. So, I understand that we are all looking for a resolution here. And in all fairness, why would I be charged twice for the paving of the streets? I've already paid a very fair price to the developer. You know, I, I paid it seven years ago or eight years ago this evening. Why would I be asked to pay again when I pulled a building permit? And furthermore, why am I being asked to do that? What about the homeowners that live on that street? They have just as much benefit, even greater benefit than, than I have right now from my lots. Right now, I can't do anything with my lots. I'm being held hostage. But yet, the people that live on that street are still allowed to reside in their residence and it would be absolutely absurd to think that, that, you know, they would have to vacate their property. But essentially, that's what this council resolution is causing me to do. I'm, I'm not able to exercise my business, I'm not able to make a living. So, I, I appreciate that we're all looking for, for a resolution here and maybe the best way to do that is to do an assessment on a per-foot basis as Councilman Cummings recommended. I just wanted to state the point that I've already paid that to the developer. And really, this is a, a promise, an agreement between the developer in River Green, it happens to be Chad and Wheelan, and the city. I'm a builder, I own a lot, I don't own the street. I never owned the street, I didn't have anything to do with putting the street in. I bought a lot after the plat was recorded. And at the time, the current, or not the current, at, at the time, the plat was recorded, the mayor signed off on it. So, it's really, in my opinion, not a development issue because the development met all the requirements at the time the final plat was reported. So, really, this is a retroactive law that, in my opinion, is very unfair.
Thank you, you raised a good question.
Well, and, and, excuse me, I don't want to take more time, but I did go down to the city to apply for two building permits in the overfloor part section in River Green last month and I was denied. So, I would, I would really appreciate, and I was not denied in writing. I got a phone call later on, I was never informed that this was going on. I didn't find out that this resolution passed until I tried to pull a building permit. And I have no idea how many other property owners are in the city of Canton that aren't even aware of this. So, I, I just think it's very unfair and, and it's not really pro-business, pro-housing at all, right at a time when we're coming out of this recession.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Will you first, go ahead?
Thank you. You know, I agree with everybody that's come up here and spoke and Mr. Cummings brought that proposal forward for the work session and we dialogued through that work session. And his thought process at that time didn't include a lot of these subtleties that are coming out right now. And we then brought it forward two weeks later to discuss again and find out the, and move ahead. But, for an example out there, you're using River Green quite a bit. It's River Bend, there's no homes on River Bend. And that street is not paved with final top coat. So, there's no way for us to hold anybody's feet to the fire to get that long road taken care of. So, there is a lot of homework we're going to have to do to get this resolved. And when I say "we," I'm referring to the council as it will be coming next year. So, this process is going to take quite a bit of time.
Mr. Bright?
Just sitting here listening, when we voted on this new policy in August, I, I had no idea that there were builders, individuals that owned these lots already, that were ready to build on them, I had no idea. It just occurred to me, listening to this last man that spoke, he's on that property for what, six or seven years, something like that, he said?
Eight.
Eight years he's owned the property. There's no difference in him and a person that lives there, except that the house is there, the house is not there. It's completely unfair. We, we need to turn these permits loose tomorrow morning. I mean, we need to, to do that right now. That is not right. The, you know, it's, it's, they bought their lots in good faith, just like Mr. Cummings and his neighbor bought their homes in good faith, thinking that the street had been approved and accepted. He said he was right next door to you or on the same street. That's, that's, that, that's not right. We, we need to turn those permits loose now, right now, to, tonight. And I'm going to make a motion later, after this is over, where I'll, uh, see if we can amend the agenda to first rescind the mistake that we made in August. Then we can move forward correcting it, but we cannot hold these hostage. All these guys would have to do is get together, get a lawyer, formal class action suit, they would win. They're no different than somebody that lives on that street. They're no different.
The more I told him, has had one effect, has brought people up, brought the discussion forward, which is something that we didn't have before this. Weren't able to get any attention at all. No. Okay, let's move, let's move along here, the, Pat Gold.
Y'all are going to be surprised to know I'm not here to complain about anything. I just wanted to highlight a recent event that we had in downtown Canton. Taste of Canton was on October twenty-fourth and this is the first year that actually Canton Tourism and the Main Street Board combined together to sponsor Taste of Canton. And I think together we did a wonderful job under the leadership of Megan Griffin. Megan did an amazing job. There's construction, as you all know, there has been construction all around Canton Park. We were going to do it, we weren't going to do it, we were going to do it, we weren't going to do it, we were going to have to move it. We did move it two weeks to be able to do it in Canton Park and it was a great evening. We just want to congratulate our winners, Downtown Kitchen won Best Taste that evening and Scott Boys won Best Barbecue. We also want to thank our volunteers and our vendors. I mean, the vendors don't make any money off this, it's promotion for their restaurants. We do share in the profits that we gain through the event, but nobody makes a real profit off the event. Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. But, the other thing I wanted to mention to you is this Saturday is our annual Veterans Day program in downtown Canton that's sponsored by the local American Legion Post. And in addition to the regular program that they will have at eleven o'clock and the parade that will begin at one, there's a very special ceremony that's going to happen at ten o'clock on Saturday morning. Canton Tourism, of which I am a part of, has recently purchased seventy-two new American flags for the city of Canton. Those flags fly throughout the city on federal holidays and the flags that had been previously flown were worn and somewhat tattered and in need of replacement. Dave Kenjimy with the Streets Department came to Canton Tourism and asked us if we would replace the flags. We purchased seventy-two new American flags, but that means that the flags that used to fly need to be retired. A lot of people have never seen an actual flag retirement ceremony, but at ten o'clock on Saturday morning, Cherokee High School Junior ROTC will have a retirement ceremony for the seventy-two flags that used to fly in downtown Canton and throughout the Canton area. And we would like to invite everybody to come to that ceremony, bring your children. It's something that is very moving. I've seen it one time when my children were students at Canton Elementary. Boy Scouts did a flag retirement ceremony there. It's a very moving ceremony, it's something that people really need to see and appreciate. Just wanted to invite you to the ceremony at ten, the program at eleven and the Veterans Day parade at one. Thank you.
Thank you. Final, Amy? Has Amy gone, got you to here?
Uh huh.
I also live in River Green, but as a resident, I'm a builder. I've lived there for going on three years. The home that I live in is about two years old, three years old. And back behind us is approximately thirty empty lots. Three-fourths of those lots are sold and are owned. There's, the other portion has not been sold. I had my home up for sale for eight months. I had a three and a quarter, um, assailable loan for my home. My home was for sale for seventy-six dollars a square foot. Everyone that came to look at it loved it. Four people were considering buying, but then when they found out what was going on, that there was no building going on, they walked away. I was going to rebuild in River Green in a section that, you know, several people probably owned or developers or whatever. So, does that mean me as an individual is going to have to top coat the road? You know, it's, it's a pain in the, I need to have to, you know, deal with this.
Well, thank you, I understand. Okay, that's all we have on the public input period. Moving along on the agenda, item nine A, we discussed the recreational program management and I indicated that I would attempt to, I would appoint a committee to look into the, to study the management of our recreation programs and I'm going to ask, I'm going to go ahead and do that, Jack, Glenn, Mr. Huffman and myself. And I, and I will be on there as well and serve, I'll serve as chair on that, on that committee. But these, these individuals will, will be here if we need to go beyond the first of years. So, that includes everyone there. Under New Business, Discussion and Possible Action on Standtec Subdivision Streets Plan, Mr. Wood.
Well, we already have a discussion tonight, obviously, on that and your management letters address this, would it be recommended? And the letter from Standtec that you have as a part of your package outlines the approach that they would employ to developing a recommendation for long-term resolution to the problem, which is not necessarily contradict the short-term problem, but I presume you don't want to do anything that, that it might be, not, not the, the best long-term approach tonight, but you do have that explanatory letter in your package, so.
Okay, anyone have any comments on that? We have a motion to approve.
Mr. Dyer and Mr. Merrill.
Okay.
And Mr. Wood and I talked about this, this is in paragraph four, where it defines what they're going to do. Streets will be examined to determine current condition, need for additional repairs, number of houses, I've added number of total unfinished lots to be included in there so that we have an impact, not just to say this is straight, it's seven houses, but it might have twenty-eight lots that are unfinished. So, that's the only addition that I had, that we add that to the scope of the project.
You have, you have that proposal in your agenda package and the total contract amount for that specific portion of, of any work that they would do would be, what was, what, sixteen, sixteen thousand?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second, a motion, second. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Discussion and possible action on recommendation for award of bid for wastewater treatment plan upgrade to Heavy Constructors, Inc. And authorization for the mayor to sign contract subject to review by utilities engineer and city attorney. This, they, they were the low bid, Heavy Contractors, it's seven point nine? Six point nine.
Six, three, nine, thirty-seven, five, twenty-eight.
Six point nine million. Now, of course, there'll be some additional layer of, for the Jeep along, we'll add in. As far as the cost goes, one percent closing and whatever else. We've got loan closing, we've got contingency, and then construction management. But this, this is just to, to essentially approve the award for the bid to Heavy Constructors and it, it is, it is contingent to on, on the certainty of our, our Jeep along, that's true. We don't want to award a bid and not have the money, if that's.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this bid or awarding of this bid subject to the finalization of Chief of Final Financing.
Have a motion, second. Any other questions? If not, those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Discussion and possible action on the recommended job classifications, Mr. Wood?
Daniel, we hand out the, okay. I think the first list you were sent inadvertently excluded five positions. And, sure, has everybody been given the revised copy, the seven, excuse me, five highlighted additions to that? Other than that, there are no changes to the list that was sent out in your package earlier. As I mentioned in the, in the, in the management letter, these classifications were reviewed by David Benoit, who was an attorney with Swerblin and Company. And these are the recommendations that he has offered for us for those respective classifications.
Anyone have any questions about these?
The ones marked in yellow in this handout.
Those were the ones left off the initial list, they're not changed, they, they just were left off the initial list.
Or please approve.
Second, we have a motion to approve these classifications, which basically classifies our employees as either exempt or non-exempt employees. Second, have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Item D, Discussion and Possible Action on Recommendation Award of Main Street Connector Project to Georgia Department, Georgia Development Partners and authorized to sign contract subject to review by city attorney, city, by city attorney.
Mr. Wood? We're asking you to authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract with Georgia Development Partners in the amount of one million fifty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-two cents. That is for the project that comes down Church Street, encompasses Elizabeth Street, Archer Street, parallel to Elizabeth and East Marietta from City Hall back up to Archer. It includes street resurfacing, curbs and gutters, sidewalls lighting and some retaining walls. Right-of-way acquisitions for that project is complete and there's some other budgetary narrative included in your management letter as well. But tonight, we're simply asking you to authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract for that project.
And this is a eighty-twenty project on the construction costs itself?
Motion to approve. Mr. Wood, have a.
Motion, we have a second, okay.
Yeah. Did we ever get a final go-ahead from the state?
Yes.
The one that Joe was looking for?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Next item, Discussion of Taste of Canton Event, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. It's an interesting situation here and I appreciate Ms. Gold getting up and, and bringing us up to date on the Taste of Canton and it was an outstanding program. What brought this about is that we have a beautiful wall as you come into the city, welcoming the city residents and also visitors. And as you come on up into the city downtown, we have had the Taste of Canton, we have First Friday, we have the farmer's market, we had the zombies that showed up. We've had a lot of activity and I want to say again, hats off to Megan Griffin for an outstanding job and what she has been doing. Now, because we do have this welcome mat out, which is the wall saying this is downtown, come on in. The sad part of this that I brought forward tonight is that with all of that wonderful stuff going on, Susan, can you hit that button? of that wonderful stuff going on, uh, Susan, can you hit that button?
Hi.
We have...
I don't.
You don't? It didn't come up?
Is this about Taste of Canton, Mr. Fisher?
It sure is.
Right, right.
I didn't see those, that part. I didn't see those up at Taste of Canton, but...
Well, that part, that's another issue, that's not mine. We had a little chip in there.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there is no chip in there and I thought all pictures were loaded, I can't find them.
Well, I tell you what, we can just, we can hit the lights again, just can't get it, but I know that everybody can visualize what I'm gonna bring up now. We have Canton Park, we have the Jonesville, the siding is coming down, and we have a whole new look for the downtown. The big improvements are right there next to it, is the bank is being converted over with the, the county water. We're getting this great look. We have one blight in this city, it's the hole. And I had pictures that I wanted to be able to show, but everybody's seen it. The hole, we have an outstanding, uh, if you look down in there, we have a weed that's over twelve feet tall. And I think that's the first ever that we've had that tall of a weed in this city. But what, what has happened here is we're welcoming these people into our city, we're showing a very good look, and then right across the street from all this activity is this sad situation. Now, the interesting part is, I had this on the agenda and lo and behold, the next thing coming up on it will be a discussion that I'm very happy to see that the tourism board have been thinking in terms of this same situation and the problem, how do we solve it? But bottom line, it's a shame that we have this and it's not just like it happened, it's been sitting there three-plus years, maybe four years. And we do have in process the unification code that needs some major teeth put into it. And the major teeth needs that we can, to individuals who do not live up to what we should consider as a standard in this city and be able to bring a fine, bring a, some charge to that. The, the eyesore is out there, uh, it's not like we did find out just rest, yesterday or anything, it's been going on for years. It's what I refer to as shame, shame, and we've got to do something about, uh, this type of thing, so I'll turn it over to the next phase of the agenda F.
Thank you. Uh, actually, F was, was removed, uh, off of the, the agenda, but I would...
G was.
Oh gee, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right, we need to discuss this one, but there's, uh, there's, it said discussion and possible action, but there's really no need for the city, uh, building to take any action on that since it, it is a contract between the Main Street Board and the property owners. So, that would be the agreement. It'll be a lease agreement is what they're looking at, uh, and, and the details of which are basically, I, I think you, you've got most of it in there, the, uh, in your, in your, uh, addendum there, but that's not the final agreement is what's shown in there. There's some changes that's been made and, and, uh, probably more that might be made, but, uh, it's basically the, uh, the Main Street Board will, uh, as I understand it, uh, be paying a lease amount of approximately a total of about seven hundred dollars to two property owners on an annual basis to utilize that place. It will be filled in partially in a somatarius type, uh, small amphitheater or something that I believe is what now, we can have someone stand up and give a, a discussion of what they wanna use it for. But, but basically, that's, that's what they're looking at. The, the agreement can be revoked by the city at any time with sixty days' notice. Uh, it's generally, it's based on an annual agreement from October one to, uh, September the thirtieth, and that's, that's what the lease amount would be for that period. And the reason there's a lease amount is because of the property owners, the two property owners there wanted the city to pay their taxes for it. Well, we can't, we can't forgive taxes, we can't, we can't forgive them. But Main Street could pay them in a amount that is somewhat comparable to the total amount of property tax that they pay as a lease amount, which runs to about seven hundred dollars. Yes?
Mayor, uh, where does Main Street, where will Main Street get the money to pay this?
There will be a budget, uh, amendment in, in the near future.
My, my, my argument here is that this is the same, this is the reverse of the argument that was presented when I set forth and said that we should charge component units for the stage, we said we can't charge ourselves, but we're doing it anyway. Uh, to me, this, number one, I don't think we need a, a, a little amphitheater there, we're spending two-hundred-and-some thousand dollars for an amphitheater in the Etowah Park, but we're, in effect, we're rewarding this property owner for, uh, just to get rid of the blight that's, that's already there. And, and I, frankly, I'm opposed to that, but, uh, but here again, we, the city's still gonna pay for it, we're just, you know, semantics is pushing it over to Main Street and...
Right. But, uh, I, I, I would, I would disagree that we're doing it just to get rid of the blight. I think there's a, there's a purpose for that side, and I think, I think you'll be amazed at the end result ultimately, 'cause I think it'll be utilized, uh, quite extensively. And if it's not, you can always cancel it in sixty days and move on.
You said the, the city could cancel it.
No, no, the Main Street Board could cancel it.
Okay. And are they coming forth, ask the city for additional funds to do whatever they wanna do there?
I'm sure they will. Well, I, no, no, I'm talking about for the, uh, uh, for the lease agreement, there'll probably be an amendment requested for that, but, and, and there may be. Now, one time, the dirt and everything was, was available and was gonna be hauled in, I don't know if they have it... Uh, Michael, do, do they have a budget or anything that they've worked, is it?
We do. Can I?
Yeah, come on up.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'm just kinda wringing my hands, this is a discussion.
So, for about two and a half years, I've been in talks. Um, it's, it's been quite an ordeal. Previously, it was owned by, um, the Cannon family, McLaughlin and the Fentchers, and, uh, upon the passing away of Mr. Cannon, um, his nephew purchased the property and purchased Mr. McLaughlin's property, thus creating a whirlwind of, of negotiations that I've been having for two and a half years about this space. So, to give you the short and skinny, the Main Street is given a set budget that you guys approved, of course. We're using the money in that to, um, and a lot of volunteer help, mind you, to fill the land up, to, um, just basically to the sidewalk level, have all that concrete, if you look around, all the concrete's really chumped and gross all around that, that's gonna be trimmed and, and cut, and, um, new concrete will be placed as a capstone over that, and then we're just gonna tear us it off. Um, I actually have the exact same opinion of you. I joined the Main Street Board about a little over two years ago and the very first thing on my plate was, let's do something about that ugly fire hole. We've called it the Fire Hole forever. Um, but the solution that we've come up with after two and a half years of back and forth is that we're using our money, uh, the Main Street's money, um, to pay for everything. The only thing that, that has come up of recent was this issue of taxes, and we said, okay, well, it's worth it to us. I mean, if our purpose as a Main Street Board is to make this downtown Canton area look better, what better use of funds than to get rid of that ugly fire hole? So, yeah, that's been absolutely top priority of us.
Yes, uh, the question would be, I, I understand what you're trying to do now, Jim, and I like that idea of making that look better and taking care of what, hey, what I wanna know, what you, your vision or plans for that, where we don't have y'all coming to us again and asking, say, well, we wanna do this, do that, and you, we need another X amount of money. What, what is the plan?
So, um, without giving too much of my own secret, uh, business strategy here...
We might wanna know the secret.
Yeah, of course. I'm in the audio/video business for a living, and what I plan on doing with my own personal money, first of all, is completing the project of getting music up and down Main Street, which will actually cross that piece of property from, and I'm done with Pan Pig, Our Place, Burns and Spice Law Firm, and then it's going to jump across to R and M Hoagie Shop and go in coastal so that they will all play the same music as someone that's, you know, a potential customer walking through Main Street. That area right there has the perfect slope, and I've already gotten the permission of Mr. Dan Mason of Mason Law Firm, and I've already purchased with my money, uh, a huge screen that will go right against that building, and I can play movies that I will pay for, um, again, uh, my money, to entertain people when they're there for First Friday, as it starts to get dark, the band's over, I'll play Rocky Horror Picture Show in October or, you know, some sort of Christmas movie in December, whatever. The point is to entertain people on my dime, but I needed the help of the Main Street and Chuck Ware and Stan Rogers of High Ridge Development, uh, I give them a lot of credit for, they're, they're volunteering their time to bring the dirt up, to clean it out. So the money that we need to do is actually just for the guy that's doing the concrete work, and even he is donating as part of his time and gave us a fun, fantastic rate. And Latimer Construction is gonna give us the dirt, and Sam Cloud is going to give us, or, uh, at least a discount on the sod and the straw and all the, all the, you know, topsoil and all that stuff we need. So every single piece of this pie, I have, I have, uh, tried to orchestrate and get everything lined up and in a row, so, uh, if you wanna talk to me outside this, I could give you a whole lot more that I've, uh, that we plan on doing. But the main point is to entertain the people that come down to Canton, give them a place where they can just hang out, put down a blanket, listen to some music, watch a movie.
Can we ask one other question, then I'll shut up.
Okay, you promise, go ahead.
Do we have too many entertainment centers downtown? With the downtown theater, we got the, over at the Arts Center, we're gonna have, we got the moving stage, we got the amphitheater that we built out of the park.
Well, so on the one hand, uh, I, if you ask me my opinion of the new amphitheater, I, I, I would say we have enough. Uh, I think that green space that you're doing down there is fantastic, but, I mean, this is all just my personal opinion. However, in downtown Canton, might as well, we know, um, the, the, getting the people to come downtown is, is a huge recipe of problems, and it's got layers and layers and layers of, of stuff, like the lack of, uh, of, uh, all of the housing like, uh, you see in Woodstock or, or, I hate to use Woodstock as the example. There are tons of deeper problems, but the short and skinny, I think, no, we need more places for entertainment in downtown Canton, I think that is what's bringing people to...
Mr. Fisher, would you have something?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reading through the, the...
Yep.
No, I just, thank you very much for your enthusiasm and what you're trying to do for the city.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate that very much.
I've been treating the art on that for, for seven years, I can tell you.
Yeah. The, to me, is reading through the lease agreements, it's one-sided, and you've made reference to the thing that some tweaking needs to be done. There's major tweaking that needs to be done in these agreements. Uh, the...
Is that the latest one that came out yesterday afternoon?
Well, sir...
I, I'm just asking, is it, that you have?
I haven't seen one come across.
Well, then it's not the latest one, it's some, there's already been some tweaking.
Well, just, just hope there's a lot of tweaking. But the, again, back to Mr., uh, Russia's issue, there's seventy-five hundred dollars that was referenced in here for the cement work, there is the, the different things that the city or, and/or the downtown development group or the tourism group is gonna be liable for at what cost? Drainage liability, if the drains are not proper, where does it come back to? Uh, who's gonna take care of this property? The city is gonna take care of the grass or mowing or maintenance on the property. Uh, removal, if, uh, that property, which would be fantastic, is sold, uh, then we've gotta remove the dirt and put it back to the original condition. Uh, the, and if we don't get it done in the length of time, we're gonna be paying two hundred dollars a day penalty fees. The naming of the park, I think that's pretty aggressive, in naming the park, it's a green space, and why do we need to have that? Hopefully that comes out. Uh, particularly because the individual has sat on it for three, four years and hasn't done a thing, why should we give them any accolades for this? Now, the legal fees and everything else, I, I'm gonna say the city, because it is the city money that we are taking and putting into a fund, moving over to this particular authority. It still is taxpayer money that we're moving around, and again, you said we cannot legally pay the taxes, so we're gonna play the shell game and move it around.
May I catch up to so far what you've mentioned? Cause I, there's...
No, cause I'm...
He's gonna name people, it's female, oh, sure, sure.
Yeah, I do. The, the one, there's a lot of, lot of different sublease, at leases and everything else. Uh, the one that we hear in the agreement, referring to the property at one-twenty-one East Main Street, and the property owner said, yeah, okay, but we're gonna have to put up a water barrier on his wall, we're gonna have to do something, that's gonna be cost. It's not a freebie, I don't think somebody's out there with, uh, lock tight, waterproofing. At what cost? So we do have a number of items in here that have no numbers, it's just, we'll do it, we gotta do this, we'll do this. How much is this thing gonna cost? And once again, uh, as referred to earlier, the sediment, uh, this council has the, uh, the, uh, responsibility of thinking things through before we move right ahead. This came up, I just wanna make sure that if there's a change, let's see the changes, this will take place next year, will not be under anything, I, cause I'm outta here two months, and I know there's a lot of people happy, that's gonna happen. I wanna hear the applause. Thank you, Jack. And, uh, I'm, I'm excited about what you're trying to do, but at what expense is my concern.
Sure. So, um, couple of those items, first of all, the naming of, uh, Fenture Atkins Park, um, that was, um, basically a request, first of all, by Mr. Atkins, the, um, gentleman that owns two-thirds of that. He said, well, can we call it park, can I, can I say something about the fact that I'm a lawyer? Uh, and then I, you know, wanna solicit, solicit my services, and I said, well, I don't know. And, uh, he said, well, what about calling it Atkins Park? And I said, oh, I don't know. So basically, the way that this is going as far as the name is concerned, there will be no sign that says Fenture Atkins Park, it's just simply going to be deemed as such by the Main Street Board with no signage. So that is basically us in this room are the people that will call it that. The seventy-five hundred has actually been, uh, reduced, the gentleman that's gonna do the concrete work, apparently does a lot of work for the city, his quote came in, uh, probably in the newest, as you mentioned, there's a newer contract, I believe that number is significantly lower. We looked, I believe it was two hundred dollars to waterproof Lamar, Mr., uh, the gentleman that owns Cloud Insurance's building, um, last name is leaving, Roberts, Roberts, thank you, Lamar Roberts. Um, the drainage, uh, there are two fantastic drains that Mr. Mason put in when he built his building, that Joey West has given his seal of approval, that the water is good to go as, as it flows down and will hit those drains and we're good to go there. Um, what else? The, um, the, well, let's, let's actually, the, the larger scope, rather than just nitpicking to death, is that we were trusted, uh, as I understand it, the Main Street Board was created by the council and by the mayor and by the Department of Community Affairs of Georgia to see that money that, which is collected on the basis of Main Street, for us to sit in our meeting and decide, as, as just a brainstorming session, what can we possibly do with the money given to, by the taxpayers to improve this city as much as possible? And as you stated, like where we have to remove the dirt, if they sell it, it's like, and in our discussions with the Main Street Board and when we all looked at that contract, said, really? We, we have to remove the dirt that we put in that, that's insane? That's insane. And I said, wait a minute, wait a minute, back up. If we spend, let's say it's ten thousand, let's say we're thirty percent over budget by the time we're done with this whole thing, let's say it's ten grand. If we, as the Main Street Board, spent ten grand for that land to be sold and developed and to be into this great new building, man, that was worth it. But if it's not, we've still got this green space that we have that got rid of that horrific eyesore, that the only thing worse than that eyesore was the big white Jones Building, which is now gone, thank God. So I think, all I can tell you guys as you vote on that, getting, giving us the okay for the, you know, amendments to the budgets and all the other stuff, is that we have thought about every single detail of this as hard as we possibly could. And at the end of the day, I think this is going to wind up being one of the best things that the Main Street Board has done in the past two years. So I just hope that you trust that we beat this to death and try to think of everything we possibly could.
Michael, remember too, the seventy-five hundred dollars or whatever, that's being split between tourism and Main Street.
Oh, sweet, yeah, there you go.
And Main Street is private money. So the, the part that Canton, tourism is paying is half of the total park, and it is paid for with hotel motel taxes, not by property owners in the city of Canton.
First, the point of order is that at these meetings, unless the council votes, we're not supposed to have people participate in a discussion. Not that we wouldn't have voted to have the discussion, but I'm just saying we just didn't do what we were supposed to be doing. But this reminds me of an old adage, is act in haste and repent in leisure. And we found that occurred when we did this thing with the streets and all the contractors came up here. I tend to agree with Mr. Barrisford that when this comes back to the council, if it does, we should at least know how much it's going to cost us and, and look at all the things that it's going to mean that we spend taxpayer money on. I personally am opposed to it, and I won't vote for it no matter what they come back with, but that's.
I think the only, the only vote that, you know, we would have is on a budget amendment, assuming that they wanted to transfer from, continue, request to transfer from the tenures is for the seven hundred dollars a year for tax money. Is that, was that your understanding?
That's all it's been given.
And, and they may or may not come back, but I think, I think they have the authority to make that decision as to whether they want to enter into a contract with somebody or not as a, as a corporation. Thank you. All right, let's move along.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see you over there.
Listening patiently. Michael, and I've been talking about this fire hole and working on it for two years. He came to me two years ago. I would love, of course, I've, I've not done much since then, I just told him I would support it. I thought it was a great plan, a great concept. I, I still do. But, and, and I fully understand, the Main Street Board can act. There's so many questions of, say, in a year or two from now, Mr. Venture and Mr. Atkins have an offer on the property to sell it, and then the Main Street Board has to spend more taxpayer money, and let me clarify, it's all taxpayer money. Hotel and motel are property owners too. They pay taxes, way more than individuals do. It's all taxpayer money. No other money comes into this city except for, from the taxpayers, not one penny. You can call it what you want to, it's taxpayer money. It's our job to be good stewards of it. Now, what happens if they, Mr. Venture has an opportunity to sell this in two more years, and it costs eight or ten thousand dollars to dig the dirt out, and then the next guy that buys it just does the same thing? Lets it sit there and fester and weeds grow up? Just another speculative deal. Mr. Venture's been an irresponsible property owner. He's let weeds grow up to that thing, that, that ugly fence is there. So the, the reward he's going to get is this incredible sweetheart deal, where it doesn't cost him a dime. His property's going to be improved, make it more marketable. And then when it sells, it's not going to cost him anything to put it back like he wants it. If the guy that buys it wants to leave the dirt in there, he buys it, it's all on the taxpayers' back. I see the other side of it. If it sits there as a park for two or three years, then somebody buys it and builds a nice building on there, yes, the speculation has paid off. But Susan, if you'd put those pictures up, I, I had a little fun taking some pictures yesterday of some other blight in Canton. Go to the first one, please.
I'm, I'm sorry about.
Right there.
What was you?
Back up. There. Just, how, how, how is it different other than the fact that it's on the corner downtown? I mean, this property here is, it's not that, it's a lot better than it was, but that's the first impression you get coming into downtown from the south. What if he comes to us and wants his tax break? And it is a tax break, as John said, it's just a shell game. We're going to pay Mr. Venture and Mr. Atkins, what is it, seven hundred dollars or something like that? And then that'll be, it's the amount that they, so they're, they're getting a tax-free deal. Go, go to, to the next one, Susan. That's in the city too, that's on East Killian Street. You can probably push that house over, you know, two or three of us. That's a blight too. Bad, again, bad irresponsible property ownership. Why not give that guy some money too? Some taxpayer money. Next one. Same thing. That thing's been sitting there burnt out for about six months now, the shed behind it's fallen down. I mean, is it just going to sit there until it collapses and then will he get money? I mean, how, how is it different other than the fact that the Main Street Board has control over what happens downtown? Next one. Same thing. That's been like that since some tree fell on it, that's right up, I was standing in the street, that's that close to the street. That's also on East Killian. I mean, again, bad irresponsible stewardship of your property. I'm just talking about a precedent to, to, to be set. I would love for the city to be able to do something with that fire hole, but it's a one-sided deal. Mr. Venture, oh, and they're going to get the place named for them as well, that's the icing on the cake, for sitting there and doing nothing with that property for four years, not even cutting the dead gum, weeds. Go to the next one. Harmon Field, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people drive by that going to the ball field, the fairgrounds. It's right there. Again, I was in the, on the edge of the street when I took that picture. I mean, that guy will, will get paid, I mean, why not give him some money? You know, how's that?
Bill, he might let us, if he'd let us use that for a park, he might.
Well, we might make him the.
I don't know how big that is.
Might want to make him the offer, say, how about if we pay your taxes and we approve the property for you and maintain it for three or four years? And then when somebody wants to buy it, you can give us a sixty-day notice to kick us off, and, and, and we have subsidized your profit. Last one, Susan. We all know how, how that's been, that's right there when you come into town from five seventy-five bypass, they're right beside Williamson Brothers. How long has that been there? Again, other than that not being on Main Street downtown, it's the same thing. It's somebody not taking care of their property, and now we're going to reward these people for it. Guys, there's got to be, you can turn the lights on, Susan, there's got to be a better business plan, there's got to be a better plan. I want to do this. I'd love to see that, a green park and a nice little stair-step amphitheater, there's got to be a way to do that, but we've got to make a better deal. Mr. Venture, for once, finally, also a man that, I guess he's on the senior tax exemption too, needs to have a little bit of skin in the game. Take a little risk, put, put a little, I mean, if we're going to do it, maybe, maybe have an agreement, say, you can't sell it unless it's, it's to somebody that's going to build a nice building or do something with it. Again, what if he just sells it to another guy that just lets it sit there? I mean, there has to be a plan, there has to be a plan, just like with the free rent we're going to give to businesses that can't make it on their own. I asked and begged and pleaded for somebody to give me examples where it worked. None, zero, none. The free rent deal in Riverstone, fail, fail. It's been going two years, one time it happened, and they left when the free rent ran out. So there's got to be a complete plan from start to finish for, for this thing to properly work. So why don't you all go back and do your homework? It won't be up to this council, it'll be the next one. And if the next one wants to give a special sweetheart deal to somebody just because they're downtown, then so be it. But I don't think these six men up here are going to give any special favors out. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Okay? That's, we discussed that. Well, enough there, okay. You have in your package, of course, you were given the city manager's report, do you have anything else to add to that?
Note, the only thing I might add is the reminder that City Hall will be closed Monday for Veterans Day. I would make Mayor Council aware that our economic development coordinator, Matthew Thomas, informed me yesterday he had been accepted into the leadership chair. So congratulations, and he will represent the city well.
Yeah, under council introduced, I was, Mr. Bryant mentioned it, you ought to take
a look at this permitting process. And the reason we, and I'd like to add it with the permission of council, took the discussion under council introduced now. And the reason we did this was because of the problem that we had. And after hearing several cases tonight, I would hate to see that we, in haste, just go the opposite direction a hundred percent. So I'm proposing that we do a one-on-one basis of each permit being submitted here, but being brought to council with a recommendation after our city attorney has looked at it, so that we don't, we don't create an exact opposite situation by throwing it out. But then on the other hand, I am very empathetic to Mr. Goldwyn, who did pay a premium on a price eight years ago for a lot if he wants to build on it. But I may not have the same empathy relative to somebody that bought a lot at a fire sale last month and, under a different set of circumstances. So I think we need to look at it on a one-for-one basis until we get the results of the study that we have approved with a recommendation coming out of the building department to say, we think you ought to go ahead and issue a permit on this one, but not on this one. And then Mr. Dyer would then review that to see it until, until in which time we have the results of our study. That would be my recommendation, I'd like to make it a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Have a second.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think we already have acted in haste, and we are finding out what the unintended consequences are. And I think that we should, instead of handling this on a one-on-one basis with, with the council getting involved and everything, we've hired a consultant, we're going to get a report from that consultant in the not-too-distant future. I think in the short term, we should have put a moratorium on the ordinance that we passed and, and let, let the things go as they were going before, because we can't hold these builders hostage, as, as they say, it's their livelihood and, and the more, if they build, that means we're getting more people into town and, and more tax money to the city. So, and, other than that, if we go one-on-one and we, we have to delay it to every two weeks, it's, to me, it's just a waste of time.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tend to agree with Bob there, we made a mistake. If we start to this one case-by-case basis, you've got so much potential for bad decisions, wrong calls. They got it off the lot last month at a fire sale price. He also bought it on faith that the city's doing what it's supposed to do. If Mr. Cummings decides to sell his house and the buyer says, you have to build a sunroom and I'll buy it. You couldn't build a sunroom because you can't get a permit on that street. I mean, same deal. It's, it's, we made a mistake. Black and white mistake, and we need to first push rewind and go back to where we were, and then correct it from there. It's got to be corrected. But this business of, of having, putting the burden on the building department, the planning and zoning department, or the council to decide one at a time, at a time, it's going to be like pulling teeth and, and, and eventually we're going to pull the wrong tooth. That, that's just not a, not a correct way to do it. We need to go back to where we were and, and with the SanTech plan, move, move forward on correcting this mistake overall, but, but we've, we've got to turn these guys loose, and we've got to turn them loose right now. It's their property, it's not up to us to decide that, it's their property, they bought it in good faith. The pre, and I want to make it clear, there's not a person in this room that had anything to do with the epic screw-up multiplied by ten that, that, that happened. We're, we're here to help and, and, and correct it, but the first thing we, we can do is, is at least let these guys use their property.
I would have to agree with Mr. Bryant and Mr. Rush, that we can't, we can't hold these folks up, it's, it's hostage, and we need to go ahead, these people, the builders, they do talk amongst each other. We want builders to come into Canton, we can't have a reputation of being beat up on the builder. So we got a plan, it's to use the SanTech, but until that time, we, we go back the way we were, so. Mr. Mayor, that's what I.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be over to you, Mr. Gump.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in support of the comments that have just been made. I, I think that, once again, the, the council tries hard to make sound decisions. On the surface, when Mr. Cummings brought this issue forward in a work session, and then we looked at it two weeks later, and we voted on it because there, that is a big problem, we recognized that big problem, and we thought we were going to be able to solve it with that type of a concept, and it turns out that it can't be done the way we had hoped. So we've got to give these individuals who have property and ready to develop and move ahead, we need to back off of that, then let's come up with a good plan. So the question's on the floor right now, it's been made a motion and a second.
I don't think it was second.
It wasn't a second.
It did get a second.
Yeah, second.
Thank you.
One, one last point.
Okay.
One, one last point. Not that I disagree with all that's being said, and I'd like to just revise the motion that we lift the enforcement until after we've had a time to receive the study and review the results and lift the enforcement of this, and at the time we get the study back, we can determine whether we want to continue the, or discontinue the ordinance or the instructions to our building department, but until the time at which we have complete information, we won't enforce it. In other words, the valley should.
I'm taking one motion off and putting another one on.
I'm just amending it to make it a lifting of the enforcement of that policy until after we have gotten the study returned to us and a time to review it, at which time we could decide whether that will be a permanent one.
As of? As of? Tonight?
As of immediately.
Okay. I don't know, Mr. Dyer, is that?
You amended your motion to that in your second? You got something?
Yes, sir. I need to make sure that everybody understands what's happening here.
I need to make sure that everybody understands what's happening here. I, I think what you're saying is that once the study's back, the moratorium goes back open?
No. Once the study is back and we review the study and if it is applicable based on the study, then the moratorium would be restarted if it was thought it was the best thing to do. In other words, this is only a, it's only a, uh, a postponement of enforcement until we have all the facts from the study in which to make that decision. How about this, Glenn? Just let the moratorium clean. I mean, it can be brought back on if you want it to be brought back on, but instead of complicating it up about.
So we wanna rescind that, that direction of the staff?
Fine. Okay. So that's your motion?
Because another council or a council, next council or this council or whatever council, when that study comes back, that it restate that moratorium or revise it or whatever.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Let's be clear. The motion was amended again. We rescind the policy.
Rescind the, rescind the policy and we'll address it after we have further facts.
Right. Okay. All right. Those in favor, six and five, saying aye? Those no? All of you with a no, two more.
You open the building department now? It's like a full permit?
Okay, under, uh, under the mayor's report, I want to amend the agenda with your concurrence. We had something come up that we thought we had resolved, but it didn't. And Georgia Power would like to get this fairly quickly, what it is. It is actually a, uh, a license agreement for us to put things on their telephone poles like Christmas decorations and whatever, whatever we have, principally that, I guess. Anything else, you know? I think it's the same agreement that we've had every year in the past, but this year they, they felt like, uh, they want it formalized, they want a resolution from the council in order for this, to adopt this. I think it's probably been signed off on in the past year, so.
You both, um, there's amendment?
If you wanna read every word of that, you're welcome to.
We can read them, but it's pertaining to both documents.
Yes, I am. I'm telling you, they want both of these documents signed. Yes. We have a motion to approve this. A second. Any other discussions? Those in favor, six and five, saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, and they needed to copy the minutes is the reason we had to do this. We need to do it. All right. You understand what's due here?
Mr. Mayor? Excuse me. I have some other one. We have a sign ordinance. Several citizens have asked me this week about the signs all over the place on the public property. And I understand in the past, we've just kinda let it go during the political campaign. But can, can we agree that we're gonna start enforcing the sign ordinance now?
I think, I think the problem, Bill, is we really don't have a sign ordinance that's applicable to campaign signs. It, it, I mean, I don't think you can treat a campaign sign like a commercial building sign. And that's what we had, that's what we have now. I think in our new code, perhaps we should have a section dealing with campaign signs where you can, where you cannot, what duration you can have and stuff like that.
Well, I did spoke to the code enforcement, um, officer that's, that's on duty while Stumpy's out of town today and he said there is. And he said, as a matter of fact, when Stumpy comes back, he's gonna start pulling all the signs off the public right-ofways anyway. So there, and that'll be, I think, Tuesday. So apparently there is one. I haven't read it. I just called and asked.
I think it's a right-ofway issue more than a sign issue. There is no sign permanent for a physical sign. There's just a prohibition against signs in the right-ofway.
But that's what, that's. Can we have, where we have, they put signs every ten feet or so and then they staple them together to make them bigger and wider and taller? It, it's just getting completely out of line.
Well, box on the side of the brush. There's, there's, you, you can't put stuff in the right-ofway.
Yeah, but I'm talking about even on private property.
That's, no. Can't control that.
A way you could control the size of it, I don't have on private property.
But I mean, with the ordinances we have in place now.
No, we gotta change it.
Yeah, I, I didn't realize, in fact, I, I didn't, I didn't realize we had anything to address per se campaign signs.
I don't think we do. I think it's just the right-ofways.
Just right-ofway, okay.
So, so he can take them up during the right-ofway vote?
If you tell him which signs to pull up, I'm sure he'll do it. How's he know which sign?
I'm gonna tell y'all, he's planning on pulling them all up.
And he'll get them all. So that every candidate's signs are treated equally.
Well, I mean, that'll, hopefully it'll be in the newspaper, Fair warning, if you want your sign, come get it, cuz it'll be gone in future.
Okay, I think, I'm sorry. Yes. You know, I think, I think we may have, may have heard that at some point, yeah. It may have seemed like a new.
It probably doesn't have a mention about campaign signs, it doesn't prohibit them and it doesn't provide permits. It may say not more than two times.
You had your hand up?
I'm risking gonna blow down the jersey.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, six and five, saying aye?